Alright, everybody, I'm gonna get us started. Those of you that are not panelists in the webinar tonight, if you can just make sure you keep yourself muted. There is a chat feature that if you would like to ask questions, we will read them and answer them at the end of our discussion, so please feel free to... Sorry, I'm getting a lot of requests of people coming in here. We're over 70 people, which is great so far. I anticipate we're gonna be pushing closer to 100 here as we get started. So, just to get us started, the focus behind today's webinar is to provide a little bit of context and information for those of you that are on the current recruiting train. For if you're a player or if you're a parent supporting your child, this is a panel full of our Cleveland Forest coaches and directors. And every one of these panelists are also NCAA college coaches in the Northern Ohio market. So, we felt as though it would be very advantageous to bring everyone together and to be able to identify a few kind of key topics and address those through the panel. And then at the end, reserve some time for your questions that the panel can answer for you. On today's panel, we have Coach Vishnu Maharaj. He is the Cleveland Forest Boys High School Program Director. And he's also the Assistant Coach at Cleveland State on the men's side, which is an NCAA Division One program. Coach, if you want to say hello?
Hello, everyone.
So, panelists, so you know when you say something, you will be... Sorry, trying to accept more people in. When a panelist says something, their face should be popping up on the screen for everyone to see. Also, on the boys' side, Coach Blake New. Coach Blake is our U-17, U-18, 19, boys, Blue Team Head Coach. And he's also in his, this is his 22nd or 23rd year as the Head Men's Coach at Oberlin College, which is an NCAA Division Three program in Northern Ohio. Coach Blake, say hello.
Everybody.
Then we have Coach Rob Miller, who is our Girls' High School Program Director. He's also an NCAA Division Two... Pardon me? Trying to mute some folks, they come in. Rob is at Notre Dame College on the women's side, NCAA Division Two. Coach Rob, say hello.
Hey, everybody.
We have Coach Riley Duprat, who is with us on the club side on the girls. She is the U-15 Blue and U-17 Boys' Coach. Coach Riley is also the Women's Assistant Coach at Cleveland State University, which is NCAA Division One. Coach Riley?
Hi, everyone.
And last but not least, we have Coach Tara, who is one of our Cleveland Forest Soccer Academy Program Directors on the west side of town. She's probably our longest-tenured Forest employee on this panel for the years that she's been working there. And also an Assistant Coach at Baldwin Wallace on the women's side, which is NCAA Division Three. Coach Tara, say hello.
Hi, everybody.
So, as we get going, we spoke a little bit with the panel ahead of time to really identify a few key areas. One of the key areas in the conversations that I know I've had with them and that college coaches are talking to each other about and college and club directors and coaches are talking to each other about is the impact of the COVID-19 situation and how that is impacting the recruitment process. So, I'll start with Coach Rob, if you can. Talk to us a little bit about the current NCAA dead period that's been instituted.
Okay, so currently, we are in, for both NCAA Division One and Division Two, a dead period until April 15th. And basically, what that means is that we cannot host anybody on campus, nor can we go to evaluate anybody in person. I think with the circumstances being what they are right now, and I think dead period is probably not a great term to use. I think it's, this is across the board. Everybody's sort of in this mix right now. I think one of the things that I, could probably be one of the most important things you gather from any of this is that everybody is in the same boat. And everybody's recruiting timeline is gonna be pushed back because of this delay in terms of, you know, the next, foreseeable future anyway. So, yes, we are in a dead period, but that does not mean that we cannot communicate. As long as we are following along NCAA Division One, Two, and Three rules in terms of communication, meaning if you're of the right age for a Division Two, we can still communicate with you and you can still communicate with us.
Coach Blake, is there anything else you would add to that with the current dead period that the NCAA has instituted?
No, it's very similar in Division Three. I mean, I think, you know, we have a little more allowable rules, if you will, where we can, we can pretty much talk to anybody that's of recruitable age in terms of calling them. There's not, there's not deadlines or time periods where we, where we can't call them. But it really has affected us in very much the same way. You know, we're still in contact with people by email and through phone calls and sometime the internet, but we can't go off campus and we can't have anybody on campus.
Coach Riley, if I can ask you, what would you say to tie off of what the two coaches just said there? What would you say would be important for the players right now? What kind of things should they be doing during this, this dead period with recruitment?
The advice I've given to a few of my players is just research as much as you can. You can do virtual tours. You can look at online, see what programs and academic programs they have. I would do as much research on schools that you're interested in. That way, when this dead period's over and when things get back to a little bit normal, you have a list, a manageable list of schools that you can visit to kind of continue with that recruiting process. Just do as much research as you can.
Coach Tara, is there anything else you would add on to that?
No, I would just say some, a lot of the schools are doing virtual tours. We made a virtual tour for BW that we're sending to recruits. So, you could ask the coach if they have one of those, because you can't get on campus, you can't be in person with them. Another thing I would say is a lot of admissions departments, D3-wise, are doing the same thing. We're having tours of admissions, able to talk to them through like Google Meet, like we're doing right now. So, just look into some of those things, do research, like Riley said, and just take care of that part of it. That's about it.
Coach Vishnu, is there anything players can be doing as it pertains to the best ways they could be spending their times? And maybe the highlight videos?
Yes, just, I wanted to add a little bit to what Coach Riley said, right? So, obviously, she mentioned that, you know, players should now be spending time in identifying those schools that they might have interest in. I personally feel as a coach, right, we currently have a lot of time on our hands. And I feel like for players, our players would be right now beneficial to start creating good relationships with those coaches, right? In a perfect world, okay, a college coach might not have the time to do that, but right now, I would say that's a, that's a big possibility. There is a lot of issues going on right now in terms of eligibility for the next year for current players, but that really applies to spring sports, because those were the ones that were impacted. So, those coaches are dealing with a lot more right now rather than, you know, full sports, right? When it comes to men's and women's soccer. I just wanted to add that piece. For, to answer your question, Marco, in regards to the video. Yeah, no, I also think that this is a great time to dive into that and really come up with the, with the good video that highlights you as a player, obviously. And, you know, offensive highlights, defensive highlights, and then obviously things in transition, actions in transition. I usually like to see a video that goes between five and six minutes. Anything beyond that might tell me that, you know, there isn't enough to show. And anything above that, it might just be, to be honest, too long to sit and watch. But right now, that doesn't really apply, because I just said we have a, we have a lot of time to work with. So, yeah, yeah, in terms of the video, that's what I would say there.
Thanks, Coach.
Marco?
Yes, please, Rob.
Marco. Sorry to interrupt, but I actually just got an email from our compliance officer. They just extended the dead period for Division One and Division Two through May 31st. So, we have another two months before anyone's allowed to be doing visits or college coaches are allowed to see players. So, we're aware.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you for that update. We'll obviously share that information in email and help to create some strategies for parents and players. So, anybody who's listening in or watching this or who will see this recording as we send this back out, I think it's important that you remain in touch with your, especially with your program directors, Coach Vishnu and Coach Rob, as well as your, your coaches that directly work with you, to ask any questions that this ever-evolving situation does impact your recruiting process. And I think it's important that we over-communicate right now to make sure that everything is working as smoothly as possible during this dead period. Moving us along with our topics, Coach Riley, that was a good segue. You, you gave us an update on that. I was going to ask, are there any other pieces of information that the NCAA or your compliance officers at your universities or colleges have been telling you as to how the, this dead period or how these travel restrictions might impact your recruiting and how that might impact your current roster as it pertains to the upcoming fall season, if at all? I'll start off, Coach Blake, is there anything that you can share on that?
Yeah, so I, I think a lot of it is, I think, going to be... The interesting thing, I think, is going to be different by institution or by region of the country as, as this, as this kind of sweeps through. I know that our campus leaders have already been talking about eliminating summer camps on our campus, which will affect me, because, you know, we had a ID camp scheduled for July 18th. Now, that may change, but for right now, everything's kind of in a holding pattern. And everybody is unsure of how quickly or how this is gonna happen. So, I think it's putting a lot of kind of questions in people's minds about what the, what the summer is going to look like in terms of camps and things like that. But that's what I've heard from our, our college leadership so far.
Thanks, Blake. And we'll, we'll actually circle back as it pertains to camps, because I think that's a very important topic on its own that we're gonna address here in a moment. Coach Rob, anything else you want to add as it pertains to things you've heard from the NCAA and how that might impact your current roster? And also, I think maybe a key component is how does that impact the graduating class of 2020? And that may not be committed yet.
Yeah, um, there's a lot that's up in the air in terms of what's gonna happen with this class of 2020. I think most importantly being in terms of players' eligibility and whether or not they're gonna be qualifiers in terms of if they've had a chance to take an SAT or an ACT and get the score that they would need in order to be academically eligible. I think that, you know, that's something that the NCAA is discussing right now. It could get to a point, and this is something that's been discussed on our campus where, and a lot of schools are different. You know, we are a test optional school, but not every school is. Not test optional in the sense that you still need to in order to be eligible for NCAA athletics. But I think it's gonna come down to the NCAA having to make a decision on whether or not they can just go off of a GPA in order to make sure that players are eligible for their, for their freshman year of competition. One of the biggest things that we've encountered is the recruitment of international players right now and how that's gonna affect our rosters for next year. And not every school is in the same boat when it comes to that, but I know there's a lot of schools that are, because we don't really know what's gonna happen in the future in terms of travel bans and travel restrictions on our international students, either A, coming to campus for the first time, or B, returning to campus for their sophomore, junior, or senior season. So, I think one of the things that I've heard from a number of different coaches is that they are working diligently on recruiting during this period, not only for their class of 21, 22, and 23, but also on their 20s to make sure that they're gonna have a roster that is of the right size and, and manageable for next fall.
Coach Vishnu, I know with your Cleveland State men's program that you do have quite a few international student athletes on your roster. Is there anything that you guys have been discussing as to how, maybe if there are still travel restrictions for some of your players, that you might have to potentially recruit a little differently with maybe more localized or regionalized players that, that maybe are still looking for schools and how that might impact them as well?
Yeah, so we've discussed about that a little bit. But obviously, with what's happening and things changing on a daily basis, we haven't, we haven't come to an agreement. But yeah, that's, that's, we're keeping that in consideration. For 2020, we're looking to add two more players. Initially, our goal was for those two players to be international players, and that's, that's slowly changing. And then speaking with other coaches at the Division One level whose rosters are, that, you know, their rosters rely more on international players, they're, they have a little bit of a bigger concern. And I know that for a fact, they're, they're changing their recruiting strategies. And they're executing it as we speak.
So, to me, that sounds like this is maybe a very advantageous position for your American player now to have maybe more opportunities in the NCAA, especially on the men's side. But I know it is also becoming more and more prevalent on the women's side. So, that is potentially a positive that could come out of this for the American player. Moving on to a different topic, and I'll ask Coach Tara, I'll ask this to you. What is BW doing to plan on adjusting your recruitment strategy now that these showcases and ID camps have been essentially canceled since mid-March? And now, we, with our last update from the Soccer Federation and US Club and USC Soccer, that we are suspended until April 30th now. How has that potentially changed your discussions on how you are gonna recruit players moving forward into the summer months?
Well, right now, we're, we're done with our 2020 class. And just to go back a little bit to your last question, because D3 for us is a little bit different. We're actually test optional at BW. So, for those 2020s who haven't been able to like take their SAT or ACT or in that situation, they don't actually have to for us. It's a little different for every, every school has a different standard. So, we're a little different than D2, D1 in that way. But as far as us for 2021, we already have a pretty good amount of players we've been in contact with for 2021. It would definitely affect our 2022 grouping, because that's a lot of what we are gonna be looking at, obviously, this spring, the rest of our 2021 class and 2022. So, we are hoping that we can get our, you know, our camp this summer. We haven't heard, just like Blake said, we don't know if that's gonna happen, but if it does, that camp will become a lot more important. We used to kind of use it as just a way to kind of interact with the players and see if they like us, as coaches, see if we like them as players. But now, we're gonna have to really use it as more of an ID thing, because we're not gonna be able to see these players play all spring. So, the camp will become a lot more important if we're able to get it in this summer.
Coach Riley, is there anything at the Division One level at CSU that your team is strategizing a little differently for how you're going to manage recruitment during the summer months?
Yeah, so on the female side at the Division One level, we're working a lot on our 2022 class. So, kind of what we're doing right now is we recruit really well out of local region. So, most of the 2022s that we're interested in, we've already seen. So, what we're doing is just kind of organize as much as we can, get those recruits kind of in, not a list, but prioritize which ones we're gonna try to see as much as we can when we're allowed to. So, kind of like what I'm advising some of my players to do is make that list of schools that you're interested in. That's what we're doing with our recruits. That way, when we're able to, we can, we have a plan of action. So, that's where, that's where we're focusing. And I imagine that June 15th date, when we're allowed to contact, might be moved back for the 2022s. So, just trying to organize and research as much as we can while we can.
Excellent. And I know this question, Coach Rob, you and I spoke about how you are hearing that more and more schools are going to start doing joint camps, so a little bit larger scale camps. Something that I know Coach Blake has participated in the past at University of Notre Dame in Indiana. He had, he's always been a guest coach over there to help with his recruiting efforts. Coach Rob or Coach Blake, if you guys, one of you want to take it on what you may see could be a trend with more schools coming together to give a little bit more of a diversified ID camp so that there's more schools being able to see the player pool?
Yeah, I think it's, it's always been something that some of the schools have done, you know, over the, the past few years or whatever, where you would bring in Division One, Two, and Three schools. Because a lot of those ID camps that are run, if you have upwards of 100 kids, you might have, you know, five or six kids that are, are truly being looked at for the hosting. And anymore, they're, they're beginning to reach out and contact other coaches to come in. So, it makes it a worthwhile experience for everybody that attends. Over the past two weeks, I've been in contact with a number of the Division One schools from across the state of Ohio that have indicated that if they can get their camps off the ground this summer, they want to try to bring in some of, you know, some outside coaches to come in and take a look at the players that are there to help along in the recruiting process, to hopefully bring us back to some sort of normalcy. And, you know, the coaching community, especially in the college ranks, is very much, you know, you know, everybody's pretty close and stays in contact with one another. And anything that we can do to help each other at this time is gonna be of the utmost importance. The thing that we should all be keeping in mind, and I think everybody is, is that this is about the kids and this is about the kids getting themselves into the, into the proper spots in terms of the schools that they end up at. So, I think you'll see a lot of schools that will open up their doors because, and invite some other schools in, so you can make it a worthwhile experience for everyone.
Coach Blake, if I can just ask you, because you participated as a coach yourself in a lot of those camps that are, that have multiple schools that are in attendance, that participate as coaches, what would you say to our membership to maybe the pros or cons of such camps and maybe things to look out for? I know there's a lot of spam emails that go out of these recruiting services as well as these large recruiting events where they're not necessarily ran by a school, more so they're ran by a third party that looks to hire the school. Do you have any advice that you'd give our people on that?
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I always tell our, our club guys is, you know, especially if it's an ID camp situation, is, is to ask the question, you know, follow up with the, with the coaching staff who's, who's invited you to the camp and, and ask them, you know, where you saw me play or what did you like about me? And you can quickly kind of find out if you are, as Coach Rob said, one of those top six, seven, 10 guys that are truly there for the ID camp or are you just the person that you're, they're trying to bring along to kind of fill, fill, fill bodies and numbers and money? You know, my experience at some of the, the ones that are run at schools like a Notre Dame, University of Notre Dame is, is that they, that their staff has been very clear with us. You know, they bring in Division One, Division Two, Division Three schools, but they're very upfront with us about who the guys they are after. And then the other, and that's usually five, six, seven guys. And then the other 220 kids or so that are there are all kind of up for grabs. And so, it's a really good environment, you know, especially if you have an environment or a camp where there's a teaching component involved. And it's not just, hey, roll the ball out, play for, you know, whatever it is for, you know, especially with some of these one days. You know, I just think people have to be careful with some of these other companies that are out there and make sure you're looking at who, who the, you know, who the staff members are that are coming to those things. Because quite often, you see some of these camps where, you know, it might be even the director or, you know, the, the third assistant or something, and it's just something that, you know, some, some of the, I'm losing the word, the, what's the Division One Director of Ops? That's the one I'm looking for, who's technically not even allowed to recruit, but sometimes they're going to these camps just so that they can, you know, make a little extra money in the summertime. So, I would just say, you know, use, use us coaches as resources for those. Like, if you're interested in going somewhere for a camp, make sure you're, you're asking us or asking your coach. And, and, you know, we'll try to be upfront and ask with you as a player whether that would be worthwhile for you to do that.
And I think another thing that, to add to everybody as well is exactly what Coach Blake, Coach Blake just said is, please use our staff as a critical resource for you as you navigate the next several months and beyond. So, it's very important that you find the opportunity to send us a quick note to say, receive this email. What do you think about this? Is this the right fit for my child? And to go even further than that is to spend some time and maybe schedule a call. Now's a great time for all these, these virtual meetings is to schedule a call with your coach or your program director and to have that discussion to say, here's my list of schools. Is this attainable? Is this realistic? Am I looking in the right direction? And that way, you can gain some great opportunity right now while we're in this little bit of a slow period. One more topic I want to bring up before I move us on is, I've also spoken to Coach Rob and to Coach Vishnu on the Boys' and Girls' Program Director's side about ways that we can bring exposure back for our kids. So, you know, we're obviously on a unknown timeline. We have the communication we received from our governing bodies, both from the government itself and from our soccer governing bodies, that gives us a bit of a timeline of when we may expect to be on the field. If we really look at showcases, we're looking at probably the end of May through July for showcases. So, our program directors are currently working on creating a schedule where we can maybe go to one to two type of showcases to get some additional opportunities for exposure for the players. And then the other piece is, I know our directors are working with me on bringing clubs to our home fields, probably on Lost Nation Sports Park on the east side, so that we can then invite college coaches, even if it's subregionally, to come in to be able to see players and to just give value back to both our players as well as to those coaches who we built a very strong network and relationship with. So, I think that's very important for everyone to know that our program directors are working diligently on that. As we, as we go through the next few weeks, you'll probably see some emails coming out from your team managers with some information as to some revised events. As an example, the Blue Chip Showcase that was scheduled for April has now moved to the end of May. And the Jefferson Showcase, Jefferson Cup Showcase for the Boys' and Girls' that was in March has been moved into July now. So, these bits of information are gonna be coming out, and these are questions that are gonna be asked of us and see if that we can attend it and give those players that additional opportunity for exposure. One other piece that I'm gonna ask is, I'm gonna ask Coach Vishnu, if you can. Now that, beyond the highlight video question that I asked you, how much importance would you say is there now in being able to provide full game video, not just highlights, but actual match film for college coaches now that they have extra time on their hands to be able to see a player that maybe is of genuine interest? Coach Vishnu?
Right, so, so with the highlight videos, right, I think that's a very good starting point. And then always offer, if you do have it, which I'm sure you do as a player, always offer to send the coach a full game footage, right? Now, if the coach requests them, that means that he has some sort of interest in you. And for me, if I'm a player, that's also a way to say, hey, this coach really likes what he sees in my highlights video. But absolutely, to answer your question, yes, we should be looking into sending full game footage. Open, open request, if that makes sense.
Excellent. I know, one last sweep of our panel. Coach Tara, is there anything else you'd like to add before we start our question and answer portion?
No, I don't have anything else.
Coach Riley? Coach Riley's on a bit of a delay. Coach Rob, anything you'd like to add?
One of the things that I would think is really important during this time is a lot of us to have some time that we can spend at home and we can spend working on this actual process. Like I said before, everybody's in this together and everybody's at the same point right now, because we're all in a delay. I think if you have the time on your hands and are truly passionate about trying to find your way to the next level, I think it would make a ton of sense right now to continue to do all you can to research. And on top of that, to reach out to schools and to stay in touch with them. It, it goes a long way in telling us a little bit about how interested you actually are in our school. Because if we've heard from you in February and then we get ourselves into June here, we don't hear from you again, that tells us that you were sending out an email to, you know, 45, 50 different schools and we happened to be one of them. If you actually have a legitimate interest in a school... If you actually have a legitimate interest in a school and you could picture yourself at that school, keep in touch. Let them know what you're doing. Let them know, uh, things that you like about their program. Just make sure that we understand that you have a bona fide interest in our program and that will go a long way in the recruiting process. And as, as, um, I think Tara and Riley had both pointed out earlier. Spend the time looking at different schools online. There's not much you can do right now in terms of getting out and seeing the schools. But you can learn a lot about a school and a lot about a program by researching as best you can online.
Um, Marco, can I add to that a little bit?
Please.
Um, so you brought up a good point and it's important to, you know, have your top five tools that you are really looking at to really stay in contact with them. Um, one thing that we always recommend is, um, call us, start that, start that conversation as we move along in our relationship. And now with the situation that we're in, maybe even, um, ask if it's possible for you to talk to one of our players, get some feedback from them. Um, something along that lines to get just more background about what you would normally have happen when you're on. But you can't have that happen now. Um, so maybe that's a possibility for you to do during this down period since we do have this extra time, um, on your hands to do that.
Excellent. Thanks, Tara. Coach Blake, anything else you'd like to add before we go to the question and answers?
No, I, I just would add, you know, everybody's saying similar things, but be proactive. If, you know, this is the time you have time, um, and, and we have time. Uh, so be proactive and reach out and, and maybe it's time to do some, you know, from the, you know, alternate things, you know, have, have a, a FaceTime with a coach. Um, rather than just a phone call. Because if, if you haven't met him yet, it'd be, it'd be good to, to put a face, you know, get face to face with them if, if you're of the age that you can do that.
And I think that's an important piece to add that I think that's some assertiveness. As Coach Blake said, I think that's, that's something that coaches, I think, would be very welcoming of is to have some FaceTime with potential recruits. So that's a very good point, Coach Blake. Coach Riley, welcome back.
Marco, I have one point. Sorry, I'm back. I didn't know you guys asked me a question before, but, um, for those of you who aren't, uh, that we're not allowed to be in contact with yet because you're not at the recruitable age. You can also, what I've done for a few players is get them, you can reach out and talk to current players on that roster. So if you're interested in a school, but obviously you can't talk to the coach or they can't talk to you. You can always reach out to the players and ask them questions about it. And you get more of a candid review of that coaching staff and of that school from someone who's currently there. So you can always ask one of us to get their phone number. You can ask, um, you can slide on their DMs on Instagram, something like that. But I would recommend talking to a current player if you can before, um, even committing or just right now would be a good opportunity to kind of get a candid review of that school.
Thanks, Coach Riley. Coach Vishnu, anything you want to add before we move on?
Yeah, no, just, um, about what Coach Riley just mentioned, you can, you know, if you're a freshman sophomore, you can still reach out to the coaches. Obviously, uh, you cannot expect to get a detailed answer from a coach, um, because you're not within, um, the recruitable age. Um, but you can get like general correspondence, right? Um, information about the school, things like that. Um, but okay, if as a sophomore, as a freshman, you're already showing interest, um, when you reach out again, when you're a junior and senior, that might go a long way. Um, know that you're, as a player, you're not going to break any rules. Um, only coaches can break rules. College coaches. And then, um, I wanted to add another piece, right? As we, um, I apologize, guys. One second. Sorry. Um, so as, as, you know, as, as, as we all have a little bit more time, um, a little bit more free time. Um, in terms of, um, the video, because we've, we've bred that up a couple of times. Um, I wanted to bring this up on the boy's side. We have a person in the club that has some experience with putting videos together. And we'll send, we'll send the follow-up note on this, but I wanted to make sure I bring it up, um, because we have a little bit of a large audience. Um, again, we'll follow up, but, um, if anybody has interest, um, in that service, please reach out to me directly on the boy's side. Um, and I'll put you in touch with the right person that can help you through that. Obviously you'll need, uh, full game footage. We're trying to put together a highlight tape.
Thanks, Coach. All right, folks, now's your time. If you have questions, please enter them in the chat feature. First question is from Mike Paxos is what should the class of 2023 be doing right now? I'm going to ask, uh, Coach Vishnu, if you could answer that, Coach for 2023.
2023?
That's correct.
Um, so, you know, and I think I already sort of answered that question. Um, as a player, you can reach out to a coach and show interest. Um, and again, the coach can, um, reply back to you, just not a, you know, they can't start the recruiting process, but they can't send you, uh, general information about the school. Um, and a little bit about the program. Um, in terms of, obviously right now we're not in the field, but, um, I think it would be a good time to, you know, if there is any film. Um, I think it would be a good time to start working on that a little bit. Um, just to maybe get a little bit of practice since for when the time comes, now you're a little bit more ready to put something, um, more meaningful together.
Coach Blake, would you add anything on there on the boy's side?
Yeah, I mean, especially, uh, I, at our level of division three, sometimes I would, I would say that, you know, at the, if 2023 is probably a little bit too early for us. But not in this period of time, right? If, uh, you know, usually we're so busy with, um, right now would be 21s and 22s. Um, going to showcases and, and doing all the recruiting that we do there. But since there's, that's not happening, um, you know, at division three, you, you have the ability to, to contact those coaches. Um, they can contact you back, division three, um, and, and, you know, start a conversation if, if that's the level that you might be interested in. So.
Hope that answers it for you, Mike. If, if you have any additional questions, Mike, please pop them into the chat feature or you can get in touch with us afterwards. I'm moving on to the next question comes from one of our players. Abigail Coley says, hi, hello Abby. Has there been any talk of Ohio high school letting the no ID camp rule during the fall high school soccer season? So as such, she's asking, can players this fall during their high school season be permitted to go to an ID camp or clinic? Coach Rob, can you answer that?
In terms of, oh, wait, I'm trying to see if I understand the question correctly. Players that are participating in their high school season, can they go to an ID camp?
During the high school season.
I don't know of many NCAA schools that offer much in terms of ID camps during the fall because we're all coaching. Um, maybe the timing of it is after, I'm trying to get a timeline for what she's actually, um. What she's actually asking.
And I, I would answer it this way, Abby, is you probably, that's a question for the high school sports association.
OSHA question too.
Yeah, that's definitely an OHSAA question that, um, that they would be able to answer. I, in my many years of working in Ohio, it's very difficult to get them to budge on anything. So, um, I would anticipate that there is no discussion on that, but I do have a question for Coach Rob. Are players of age that are eligible, are they able to come in and do a division two or division three training session in season?
Uh, no, they are permitted once they're done. If, if they are done with their high school season and they have competed in their last game, yes. So typically we'll get kids that come in and do quote unquote tryouts, um, in the spring, uh, during our spring season. They have to, um, have, you know, uh, have to have had a, a current physical and all that kind of stuff. But, um, as long as they have registered with the clearinghouse and they are not in their, they're not in a season. That is the sport that they're actually playing or planning on playing, we can bring them in at that point.
Excellent.
Uh, I, I want to add something to that. Just want to make sure that everybody's aware. This is only permissible at the division two level, what, what, uh, Coach Rob, um, just talked about.
Thank you. Abby, if you can restate your second question, uh, did I hear that the June 15th will be pushed back and what might it be? I'm not sure what that's pertaining to. If you can re-ask that question with a little bit more detail, we'll make sure we get to it here in a moment. Uh, next question comes in from Renee Russell. Is it a good idea to hire a recruiting company like NCSA right now because of the dead period? Also, will there be additional showcases for the development academy? So let me start with the development academy discussion, uh, as they had a girls conference discussion today. As of right now, the summer showcase is, uh, well, the spring showcase has been canceled for boys and girls. The summer showcase is being discussed, I believe, this week. And they should have an answer to us within the next seven to 14 days. As to the likelihood of hosting the national summer showcase at the development academy level. What I would say is probably most realistic is that there is subregional or regional conference showcases that take place during the summer months. Meaning the, um, conference which our boys and girls teams are in, those clubs, or maybe a few of them get together. And they create their own little showcase from subregional schools that come in to give those kids some college exposure. As of right now, the development academy is discussing their, their showcase for the summertime. There will be no rescheduling of the spring showcase whatsoever. Uh, they are now just discussing the summer showcase and it is, um, undetermined at this point. Going back to your first question though, is, is it a good idea to hire a third party such as the NCSA to help with recruiting? And I'm going to ask, uh, Coach Tara, do you have any experience with NCSA?
Um, I do get all the notifications from them, um, matching me with the players that, um, are a good match for our program. But, um, I don't use that as much as I, um, would really use seeing players, um, having. Club coaches reach out to me with players, um, that are interested in our program, um, and having players themselves reach out to us. I use that way more than I would use NCSA, um, as a recruiting tool. Um, every once in a while, a, a player pops up that's a really good fit and I'll contact them. But I don't think that's ever really worked out more than like once or twice. Um, so I don't recommend using them, but some of the other coaches on the panel might have a different opinion.
I, I agree with Tara. Um. Yeah, I agree with Tara. The recruiting, uh, services, anything they do, you guys can do, expulsion now is all the time that a lot of them have on their hands. Um, and they're not personal. I will get like 10 to 15 of them a day. And to be honest, most of them I just go through and delete. Um, so we definitely prefer at least at Cleveland State, personal emails, um, contact from club coaches, things like that. Just so we know you're, you individually are interested in, in us at Cleveland State and it's not a generic email that goes out to a hundred coaches. So that would be my take on that.
Anybody else in the panel want to, uh, touch base on NCSA as a recruiting service?
Um, I'll add something.
Go ahead.
Yes, Vishnu.
Um, no, so I, I, you know, I think that, you know, as coaches, we, we all feel the same way when it comes to recruiting agencies. Um, I do think that they do a really good job at condensing the information. Um, so everything we're looking for, um, in terms of the information, you know, about the player is there, um, and it's laid out. Um, um, in an organized way. So I think, um, for me, that's the only positive there. So, you know, we can somehow, um, find out, you know, how, how they're doing that. And we can replicate it in a more personal email. Um, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Coach Blake?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with what, uh. Couple of coaches said there was, you know, that this is all things that you can do. And now that you have this time, then you don't need to pay somebody else to do it. Um, I, I think it's okay to, you know, join there, the free part where you can actually put your, I think there's, all these places have different tiers. And I think you can, you know, join the, the free part just to get your name out there or have somewhere where you can put general information. But I, I wouldn't be paying anybody for, for something that you can do. And especially now that you have plenty of time to do it, um, there's no reason to pay a third party to do it.
Excellent. Moving us on, uh, Cody has a question of, I think we just addressed it, but I'll reiterate. Do you know if the California Development Academy showcase is going to be canceled or pushed back? As of, uh, the information I received today and the call we had with the federation. We, uh, are waiting on their decision. They are meeting as a competition committee to see what they're going to do. I think the, the biggest concern for everybody is the travel restrictions between all the states, especially going into California, which is a hot zone right now. I think that's a big concern for the development academy is asking our families to commit to traveling there as well as for families to commit extra finances. To travel all the way across the country for the vast majority of the conferences. So as of right now, Cody, we do not know. It is up in the air, but we should have an answer in the next seven to 14 days. There should be some bit of information about the showcase. Next question comes in from Brian Rose, who is one of our team managers, I believe. Is it worthwhile to email coaches with a more personal statement of the players' likes and dislikes and other personal information? Or should they attempt something more along the lines of a video chat? Coach Rob, you want to, uh, take first? Try it that way?
Uh, sure. Uh, yeah. As much information as we can get about you goes a long way in, in terms of this whole process. And for you to let us know a little bit about you and then also express. A certain degree of interest in us and know a little bit about us. So I would, when you're establishing this communication, I would, I would recommend, highly recommend that you approach it. In so much as you're almost like you're looking for a job and you want to have as much information as you possibly can about your potential employer. To be able to let them know that you've done your research and you know something about what it is that they're selling or, or their school in this case. So when you start that down that process, yes, we want to know a lot about you. We also want you to have a, you know, a certain knowledge of, of the things that we do and the things that we offer. Meaning the different schools that we have inside of our school, uh, the different majors that we offer. Um, the, the history of our program, the successes, um, a little bit about what's going to be graduating in the classes that you're coming, that you're coming in. So if you do your homework there and, and ask questions, um, that will sort of pertain to you and your case will, will make it a, you know, a much better process for all of us. Um, now we need to know what your favorite color is and, you know, your favorite book you read last week? No, but we need to know what you're interested in studying. I think that's a big one to come right off the bat. Uh, I know this is, uh, something that goes on, this is big at our school. We have a, a pretty big population of nursing majors. Um, and that doesn't really fly it sometimes at the NCAA division one level because of your clinical schedules. Um, that's something that we would want to know personally about you as, as upfront and as early as possible. Um, so yeah, take this time to try to really get to know, really get to research the schools that you have an interest in. And, uh, you know, reach out and, and ask questions.
And I'll say something, I spent several years as a college coach as well. And I think it's important to answer, Brian, to say, anytime you contact a coach, it's extremely important that it is personalized. To really identify some things that you, you, this should be coming from your child, not from the parent. The child should be leading this discussion to be very clear. Is to make sure that the player is the one who's really talking about themselves and talking about what they're looking for in that school. Why are they interested in that school? What does it do for them as a student and an athlete? So the student athlete experience is very important and making it very personal to the program. And that will tie into a question we have that's coming up. So Brian, I hope that answers it for you. Uh, next question comes from Tristan, who is a 2021 graduate, uh, male player. He's asking if a coach from a college you're interested in has already seen you play multiple times and you are regularly in contact with this coach. Is there a need or a benefit to go to their ID camp this summer? Coach Vishnu, do you want to answer that?
Yes, yes. Um, yeah, to answer that question, I would say yes, absolutely. Um, I think, um, and I always practice it, when a player does that, that tells me as a college coach that that player really wants to attend my school. Um, so when it comes down to two, three players in one position, I think that's going to be a big factor, right? Who really wants to be here? And by doing that, you're showing a coach that you want to be at that place. Uh, even if the coach has already, um, told you, hey, you know, we like you as a player, we see you as a good fit for a program. Um, I, I think that continuing to attend their cancer, um, you know, any of those, uh, opportunities would go a long way.
Coach Riley, anything you'd add there?
I think it's, I think it's really huge that if you're interested in the school, you get on their campus for their ID camp. Um, it lets you interact with the coach more in a natural setting. Um, you get to see their campus, um, and you get to meet a few of the players. So I think it's really important that if you're interested in the school, you get to their ID camp.
Next question is the restated question from Abigail Coley is for the 2022s. Will the June 15th date where the coaches can contact players be pushed back? Coach Rob, you want to answer that one for us?
Um, yeah, this is all stuff that's being talked about with the NCAA. Um, yeah, this is all stuff that's being talked about with the NCAA right now. I wouldn't be surprised if that date is, gets pushed back. At this point, we haven't heard anything definitively. But again, I think what's important to, to understand in all of that is that there will be an announcement, you will get that information. And when it does come, understand that everybody's in the same boat. That's it. You know, every other player in that, in your class is going to be in the exact same boat. So I know June fifteenth is a big day coming up for, you know, for some people and they're, they're looking forward to seeing who is going to be reaching out to them on that particular day. But if, if that's common, that they can understand that everybody's in the same boat.
Coach Tara, anything you'd like to add to that?
Uh, no.
All right, I'll lead you off with this next one. Comes from Raymond Brown. How can you determine what positions a coach is recruiting for at different schools? Tara, if you can answer that.
Oh, yeah. I would say you definitely have to ask, see what they're looking for at that time because every year, your coaches are looking for different positions to fill. And they could be looking to fill it, they need a starter in that position. They could be looking to fill like the second spot in that position. But I think starting point is definitely email while ask that question to the coach. And hopefully the coach will be honest with you about that. I know with us, we don't just recruit mass amounts of players. We really do try to focus then on what positions we really need and the depth that we need in those positions. So it's important to have that conversation.
Coach Blake, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it's very simple is that you, you just have the, the conversation and that could, it could be by email or, or, or a phone call. Because different coaches recruit in different ways. You know, for instance, for me, I, I, I don't necessarily, other than probably center back and goalkeeper, see recruiting as a position-based function or, or process. You know, for me, I'm looking for guys that, that, that have the technical ability, the tactical acumen, a, a real demonstration of understanding the game from a tactical perspective. Because I feel like I can, I can teach a player, you know, who's a central midfield player to play right back. You know, but that's my philosophy. So it's important that somebody, you know, asks me that. Because there are definitely other guys that, you know, might recruit to a system or other coaches that might recruit to a system or might recruit to specific position. So it's, it's really important that you just ask the question.
Thank you. And last one comes from our very own Coach Ben. I don't think it's much of a question as it is a statement. So Coach Ben, I don't know if we're going to address this one, but he did say it's, once you train with your high school team, you cannot participate in any college. I just lost it. Once you pretend with, train with your high school team, you cannot participate in any college ID camps. It would be interesting to see if this does get adjusted with the current situation and what will happen with high school soccer rules for the summer. So Coach Ben, thanks for the input. Last question is Zoe Gilliam. Zoe is one of our Canton United Force affiliate players. I was just wondering if all the updates and changes to showcases, such as the possibility of going to Lost Nation for a showcase, will apply to Canton Force as well? And will things be relatively the same between both clubs? Zoe, that would be a question that you would have to ask Coach Damian down at Canton. It's, each club is going to manage their own, but as an affiliate force club, I can tell you that any force players and any force teams will always be in consideration when means are available to add in. So if we do host a showcase, even if it's a mini showcase at one of our home venues, we will always try to open up the opportunity to all of our affiliate players and teams first and foremost so that we can make sure that we take care of our kids that are within our network. So again, Coach Damian will be able to provide that information to you in the days ahead. Our next question popped up from Liam McAllister. How important is getting a ranking in top drawer soccer for the recruiting process? Coach Rob, I'm going to let you answer this one first.
A what? No, I, I, I've seen those rankings. They're, they're, they're interesting. I, I don't know sort of what their criteria is for getting a ranking. I think some of it was done years ago anyway through if, you know, if a player is a regional level ODP kid or if they're, you know, ECNL this or that, or DA this or that. I don't really know how those rankings are developed. I, I personally don't pay any attention to them. I don't really know anybody who does. I've seen some really, really good players that have gone off to play at, you know, very accomplished Division One schools that didn't have a very favorable top drawer soccer ranking, if at all. So I don't think it's important. I don't know if everybody will agree with me, but my own personal opinion.
Coach Vishnu, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think Coach Rob, just I spoke on behalf of all of us, I feel like.
And Liam, I would add this to it is, of course, it would only help if, from an exposure and a marketing standpoint, to be on such a list. But at the end of the day, when you know which school or schools you're really interested in, it's going to be very defined. Your recruiting process is going to be defined by the communication, the exposure you get to the specific school. And those schools really, it'd be very minimal if it does matter that you're on some list that is by some independent publisher somewhere and you don't even know what their criteria truly are. It could be that person that pays the most might get bumped up that list. You never know with some of these folks. So it doesn't hurt, but if you're specific with what you're looking to do and you're really, not necessarily casting a very wide net, but you're very deliberate in the school that you're looking to go to and you build a rapport with the coach and that you have your club coach support that communication and to give some player feedback on your behalf, I think that's the most realistic and most beneficial process that you're going to go through. That's what you're going to experience. So that looks like it from the questions. So thank you, everybody. Oh, there's one more. Hold on. Abby Manello. Hi, Abby. Are you able to go on a virtual tour if you're a two thousand and twenty-two? Coach Tara, take that one for us.
For us, you can. I won't answer it or you can, you want, I'll let them answer that question.
Coach Riley?
We cannot. But you can, they have them on their website, Abby. If you wanted, like, let's say you're interested in Ohio State, they have virtual tours on their, like, their college website.
So Abby, essentially, the virtual tour doesn't have much to do with the actual NCAA recruiting process. You can go ahead on to, the vast majority of schools will have a virtual tour for you that you can go ahead and take on your own without any, any issue whatsoever. All right, everybody. Thank you so much for listening in and joining us. Thank you to our panel specifically for the, the time that they provided and for the input. We recorded today's webinar. We're going to send it out as a follow-up email to, to everybody in the high school ages. So again, thank you all and thank you to our panel. Have a great evening. Hang in there. Soccer players, do your extra work at home. Stay fit, stay sharp, and we'll be in touch soon. Thank you, everybody.